Okay, good evening everyone. Thank you for being here. I want to just start by recognizing that today is September 11th. I know at school when we were recognizing the day that some of my students were saying, "I was alive then, but I was two days old," or "I was three months old," or whatever it is. And they thought it was particularly odd that they had been alive for this event but didn't remember it. But we had a really great conversation about what it meant. Anyway, I think it would be appropriate for us to take just a moment of silence to remember the victims of the 9/11 attacks and their families. So there are, well, before we get into the consent agenda, so in reviewing and approving the agenda, there were a few addendums to the agenda, and I want to break these up into a few parts. So I would like to consider the approval of purchasing of truck parts as a part of the consent agenda, so that would make it item G potentially of the consent agenda, unless someone objects, and we can take it up then. Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have a comment or a question?
Did I miss something? Was she prepared for business?
We have not yet gotten there. Don't worry, that's next. And then with the appointment of a city council representative to the Main Street Middle School Committee, I would like to take that up after the historic preservation appointment, so that would make it basically item six and a half. And then as for the event fees, I'd like to do that just after we do item nine, chapter nine licensing, or the license ordinances, and then after that, we'll do the appointment of a council rep to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Town Fair. So just before, basically, council reports. All right, so unless there's any objection to that order, or unless there's anything else, I'll consider the agenda approved. Okay, no objections, great, so we're going to move on. So now is the time for general business and appearances. So this is a time for the public to comment on any item, or any topic, that is otherwise not on our agenda. And if you would attempt to keep your comments to about two minutes or less, that would be wonderful. So any comments from the public?
My apologies for the...
Oh, it's fine, no worries.
My comments...
Morgan, get real close. But you should say your name and where you're from.
Morgan Brown, District 3 resident. My comments might take a little longer. I'd like to read the following for the record. From Ed Paquin, Executive Director of Disability Rights Vermont, regarding Mark Johnson Memorial Fund. Dear interested groups and individuals, the Disability Rights Vermont Board of Directors today responded to a concerned Montpelier citizen who hoped for a public remembrance of Mark Johnson, and for some vehicle for people to make contributions in his honor that might be used to help with relationships between law enforcement and people in emotional or mental health crisis. The Disability Rights Vermont Board took the action of passing the following resolution. Disability Rights Vermont hereby creates the Mark Johnson Memorial Fund to assist in our efforts to improve the response of law enforcement to incidences involving people with disabilities, or who are in mental health or emotional crisis. Disability Rights Vermont will use the fund to further our system improvement efforts by working collaboratively with law enforcement and other community partners, and, when necessary, by investigating reports alleging inappropriate uses of force. Donations may be made to the Mark Johnson Memorial Fund, care of Disability Rights Vermont, 141 Main Street, Suite 7, Montpelier, Vermont 05602. We appreciate all who work to make Montpelier a welcoming and safe community." And that's from Ed Paquin. And if I may, something I wrote is a tribute to Mark Johnson. In remembrance, lest there ever be a time, somewhere down the road, come tomorrow, our dear neighbor and caring friend, taken from us very tragically one early morning, be too easily dismissed and forgotten. We shall always remember a heart's remains, grieved, still filled with deep sorrow over the sudden loss of the good soul, the gentle child we all knew and greatly missed, who to us was Mark Johnson. Rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. And Morgan, thank you for your energy in the memorial fund and your tribute to him. We all appreciate it. All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I did hear expression at a prior meeting that the council wanted to move with all haste to be as transparent as possible with records related to that. I think I've asked our city manager to move with rapidity to identify what records are not subject to the criminal investigative shooting, and release them promptly to inform and community discussion, and transparency, and involvement. Distressed lives matter. I said that at the prior shooting, and I had hoped to never say it again. My public records response to the police department revealed that there is no policy in place to escalate to Washington County Mental Health when a person who's known to be a client of Washington County Mental Health is engaged for the third time in a month with the police department. That could have saved a life. So I would ask you all to take immediate action to get such a policy in place with the police department. I want to register my impatience and objection that weeks have passed and we still don't have a date set because of the way for the homeless task force, the way it was delegated to a city staffer who's on vacation or whatever. It seems to reek of a lack of a sense of urgency. It's cold out, and people are sleeping without a place to use the bathrooms at night, et cetera, without a place to charge their phone. This is not something to study for next year's consideration. This is something that needs immediate, and I'm even proposing to some of the folks who weren't appointed that we create a strike force and take care of some of the immediate needs. But it really should be government that's involved in this.
I just want to interject, as I understand it, there is a scheduled meeting.
I have received no notice of a date, and I'm on the task force.
Yes, you should have received a notice of the date. I have it here, it's September 23rd from 4:30 to 6:30.
Monday, right? Yeah, Monday, the 23rd, 4:30.
The 23rd. I didn't see that that was the only time that Will could make it, but I never heard a confirmation from staff that that had been set. Anyway, I'm glad it's set. Our meters were running again, no notice to the tourists that they didn't have to pay the meters on Labor Day. I again would ask that we refund everyone who paid by credit card and get set in motion a process to bag the meters on those days, with the bags being courtesy of the merchants. You can't credit the merchants with the holiday, but you can credit the merchants with the bags. So I think that's a goodwill, and instead of people feeling ripped off, they will feel gratitude. No progress in a month on the lot over here, no progress whatsoever other than the city sidewalks. No action has been done on that lot in a month, and that's unconscionable from a construction management point of view. My piece, which was an elaboration of my comments at the prior meeting on misplaced priorities, a version ran in the paper. I'm happy to provide an email copy to Bill and let him circulate it to you. It's worth reading more than once. I want to commend the receptivity of our new Public Works Director. We've had a good conversation, hope to have many more, specifically around a publicly viewable inventory of all of the things, so that the public can be engaged in prioritizing A municipal Wi-Fi zone would be an immense benefit to the community. I even suggested that our cameras could automatically upload the pictures of the public works, or the crap on the sidewalk that needs cleaning. You need to take further action on the CVPSA. Whatever you did last time, a watered-down like Be Nice and Work Together, was ineffective at getting any effective action out of CVPSA, and the clock is running out, and the money's going to run out. I want to appeal, last items, I want to appeal that my complaint regarding the public nuisance of unmaintained building, hazardous building, was, I think for political reasons, quashed at the building inspector level. I got the request from, I got the response from Bill, that he said, "Oh no, we can't open up this can of worms because it'll involve a lot of other buildings." But you can't have done selective enforcement on the Home Farm Road and then overlook failing foundations and failing, peeling lead paint, et cetera, hazards in the community, just because it's a powerful landlord. Our new pop-up is, popped in, our Cool Runnin' Chicken is now in the inside of Rabble Rousers, and I told Rabble Rousers that they stole my name.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments from the public? Okay, all right, so on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move we pass the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. So we are only five minutes off from the advertised time for the first public hearing on some zoning amendments, and so I'm going to officially open the public hearing on this. And welcome, Mike.
Good evening. I'm Mike Miller, I'm the Planning Director. And so I was just going to quickly go over, a quick summary of the significant changes. If you, if anyone wants to see what the changes are, they're online in the Zoning Fixes 2019 tab on the main page, and there's a strikeout version, there's a clean version, and some of the additional materials there. If anyone has questions, they can email or call my office.
And Mike, for people who want to, residents who want to review it, the document they should be looking at is the one called City Council Hearing Draft?
Yes, yep. Because most of these that are before you are zoning fixes that were based on typos, or some small changes, or some search replace items, I'll just focus on what may be a couple of the larger, more significant policy changes that are contained in the document. The first being that this hearing will make permanent the two interim changes that were approved in March. So back in March, we approved that slopes over 30% can now be developed with certification from an engineer and a hearing at the DRB. So that was an interim change that would only be effective for two years, so we're going to make that permanent. And the new landscaping and screening rules that were developed to address a number of issues, including the amount of total landscaping, non-conforming landscaping, and some waivers. So there's some additional changes that were made for landscaping. I won't go into the details, but, so those would be a couple of the more significant changes. During the second round, there probably, I would describe, three policy changes. The first being that we're removing the requirement for stream buffers on the unchanalized portions of the urban center village, so that's a bit of a mouthful, but previously, when this had been adopted, there was a requirement to have buffers on what was an undefined term of unchanalized portions. So if it was unchanalized, then you should have buffers; if it was channelized, then you don't have to have buffers if you're in the downtown core. The DRB has made determinations over the past year and a half, and found most stream segments in the downtown to be channelized. Also, being channelized would require naturally vegetated buffers, which would interfere with projects like Confluence Park, so it was felt by the Planning Commission that that requirement should just be removed. There was a memo that the Planning Commission has provided the council that is also online, if people want to really drill into the details of that change, but mostly, it's just a change to remove the requirement for naturally vegetated buffers in the downtown. Another change is to remove the requirement that density be calculated on buildable area rather than parcel size. Most communities use parcel size. Staff found that the rules that had been adopted as buildable area were burdensome to applicants, and we had anticipated that new slope maps, high-resolution slope maps, would make this easy, but it turns out it didn't. It added a lot of cost to very small and simple projects. As zoning districts were already based on parcel size anyways, when we did all those calculations for 90%, they were based on parcel size, not on buildable area size. We felt that removing the requirement would not impact the character of the neighborhoods. Again, Planning Commission agreed, and they provided a memo to that effect. And then the third change was the one you approved at the last meeting, which was the VCF A parcel boundary change, which I don't think, I think everyone was here for that one, which I don't believe is, which I believe would be more of a policy change. I also received a question about the strikeout version on why a word would be deleted or struck out and then put back in. That's just a funky thing if you do search replace. At the last meeting, I think I mentioned that there was a legal decision that came down that made the Oxford comma official, and if you don't have it, then it's read as not having it. So we did a search replace on that. So when it has which comma, or if it was which and it needed a comma, then when you added the comma, it struck out the whole word and then re-added the word with the comma, or vice versa. So that's, most of those you'll probably see if there's just a word that got erased or struck out and then replaced again. That's why it did that funky thing. And the last thing I'll just mention is administratively, this is the first of two hearings. If you, if anyone has comments, they're welcome to comment now, or in two weeks, or to email anyone in the interim. You, the council, still have powers to make changes. If you do not make any substantial changes, then you may adopt these following hearing on the 25th. If you do make changes, then we'll go from there, but if there's substantial changes. So I guess with that, I'll take questions and public comments.
Jack?
I'm interested in the, in the steep slopes interim change, because it's been in effect for a few months now. Have you had cases come in where that's made a difference in approvals?
Yeah, we've had a number of cases where that actually came up. We haven't had too many with the new landscaping rules, but we have had, I would say, at least three or four applications on the slopes. A number of projects had actually been held up because they needed a retaining wall, or they needed something that couldn't get replaced because it was more than a 30% slope.
So, and it's working the way you intended it to work?
It's working well. There's some additional changes that are in here that will make it even a little bit better.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments? Any comments from the public on these changes? Okay, so I think we are probably ready then to close the public hearing on this, and I think we need to set the second public hearing. Is there a motion regarding the second public hearing on these changes?
I move that we set a second public hearing for our next scheduled meeting.
Great, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What happened to the calendar?
Oh, good question.
Donut? Making it?
We'll find out.
Just missing last week, but I forgot to.
Fair enough. All right, so we have a couple appointments to make. So one is to the Historic Preservation Commission, and to that body, we had, I think it's one vacancy, and one person applied, and Sarah Smith applied, and now you're here. Would you like to come introduce yourself to the council?
I am really called Sally Smith. I live at Murray Hill in District 2. I have served at the interface of history, art, and civil government for most of my life, and lived in Middlesex for 20 years, and was justice of the peace, and served on the Board of Civil Authority, and was town moderator briefly. And during that time, I built and renovated a number of old houses in the central Vermont area, so I'm familiar with some of the architectural history of the area. I've lived in a number of places in Pacific Grove, California. I served on the Planning Commission, which was rife with arguments and discussions about historic preservation. So I'd like to put some of that experience to use here. I must confess, I was interested primarily in the plans maybe of the renovation or resurrection of the house at the corner by the circle out there, Route 2 Circle.
Oh, the Five Home Farm Way?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's me. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions? Great, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, is there either a motion to go into executive session, or an appointment, or whatever you'd like?
I move that we appoint Sally Getting Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission.
We have a second? All right, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah. All right, so we have another appointment to make, which is amongst ourselves, but I felt like there might be some questions about it. So there's a, going to be a committee sponsored by the school board to look into the future of the Main Street Middle School building, the future potential use of that building. Is there, they're looking for someone from the council to serve on that committee. Is there any questions about that, or anyone who is interested in serving on that?
I would like to nominate Lauren. I did speak to her about it.
Oh, okay. Is anyone else interested? Lauren, are you willing to serve?
I am willing to serve, obviously, with young children who will go through the middle school, I'm very interested, also am cautious about new commitments, so if somebody else is eager, I would also happily let somebody else who also has children, grandchildren in the school.
I'm also interested, I've talked to Andrew Stein about it, and about what the approach is, and so I would also be happy to do it.
Oh, gosh.
I don't want to push away someone who wants to do it.
Well, what would you, what would you rather?
So if you want, I will step back, but if you don't...
Given that my five-year-old at dinner tonight was like, "Mommy, do you have to go to city council meeting?" Maybe I'll let Jack take it, spend some time with my children.
Twisted her arm a little bit, okay.
Nobody else was ever...
Is there anyone else interested?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jack, Montpelier Middle, Main Street Middle School Committee.
Great. Any further, oh, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, thank you, Jack, and thank you for working that out.
Make sure you stay involved.
Okay.
It was the parents group.
All right, so I think we are up to a discussion about the Responsible Employer Ordinance, and I think this was something that Counselor Connor Casey brought to us. So I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce it, and then I'm sure we'll have some good discussion. Good.
No, that's great, really appreciate it, and, you know, appreciate both the mayor and the council taking this up. I know we discussed it quite a bit, we had a previous hearing on this, and set this as a priority for the council goals at a retreat here, so look forward to getting in the weeds a little bit, looking at the specific language. But I will start off by saying this is an issue I feel very strongly about. In my career, I've always represented sort of frontline workers, and what I notice is, we've got a lot of buildings going up in Montpelier right now. We have the Transit Center, we have a possible parking garage, we have a wastewater treatment plant, which is sort of inviting a new set of workers into our town. A set of workers, I think, has been largely invisible nationwide. If we look at how they've been treated, I think this is a group that's been sort of abandoned by the federal government. If you look at the Davis Bacon Act, it isn't what it once was, and we can actually see people who are risking their lives working on construction sites with a wage that would be less than what we would want as minimum wage, maybe 12 bucks an hour, right? We have a state government who sought to essentially eliminate the Department of Labor and merge it with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, and that has opposed, I think, almost any initiative to help these frontline workers at every point here. So when we look at ourselves as municipal government, I think it's easy to say, "Okay, this isn't our job, somebody else can do it, you know? The Department of Labor can certainly do it and enforce it." But I believe, and I'm proud as the city of Montpelier, that we've sort of taken a stand on issues like climate change by setting energy efficiency standards that go above and beyond what state and federal government has done, looking at non-U.S. citizen voting, which I believe only 13 other municipalities in the entire country has done. The Responsible Contracting Ordinance is certainly a, you know, in-depth proposal that goes above and beyond what other municipalities have done in Vermont, but I think it's important to look at and actually consider these folks, because even though they might not be Montpelier residents, they deserve to be treated with the same standards that we treat our own workers, of which we have three collective bargaining units in our own city government. And I'm really happy that, you know, we're looking at a personnel policy to make sure we take care of the rest of the workers in our government. And I believe anybody we contract, anybody who receives a dime of taxpayer money, deserves to be treated with the respect and make sure they can put food on their table, just like our own municipal workers here. I want to commend our city staff. I think we've done a much better job, just after talking to folks, about making sure that things are transparent on some of these work sites, and make sure we help out these workers. That said, I don't think that's a reason for it not to be codified in an ordinance and actually cement... and actually cemented so that any future city staff would also make sure we hold this to the same standard. I only got a really brief chance to look at the memo by Sue Allen as she was going out the door, and I know we have another set of proposals. So again, grateful to the Department of Public Works for also supporting this initiative. I think we can work, again, to hammer out some of the details. But yeah, going forward, I have invited a few folks from the building trades who actually are on some of these sites and see what happens from a first-person perspective. I know there was the recommendation to talk to the AGC, the general contractors there. I would point out that, you know, the vice president of the general contractors is also an employee of DEW, who is one of our biggest contractors in town here. So I think they should have a voice at the table and should be invited to any public hearing should we choose to set it tonight. But again, I always prefer to hear from frontline workers. It is a very dangerous job. I think we have examples statewide of wage theft, misclassification, discrimination based on somebody's gender or race in some of these jobs. And again, I think we have the ability to address it and it won't be easy. But again, that's not the approach we usually take on issues and I don't think there's any reason we might not be provocative here and set the standard for other municipalities to really look at this in depth. The language I submitted was based on Portland, Maine, and I think it would be beneficial, as Sue Allen recommended, of maybe having the mayor of Portland testify over the phone if we do a public hearing and see how in, you know, in reality, it has played out in the last couple of years. And I think you'll find that unlike some of the myths perpetrated by the opponents of an ordinance like this, this really doesn't result in higher rates that would discourage and have a chilling effect for people to, you know, bid on some of these contracts. I've asked the building trades to actually go into some examples of that and how in some cases, this has actually saved money by having professional employees who are committed to the job and hopefully, you know, paying a wage that would allow somebody who is, you know, a plumber, a pipe fitter, somebody doing this dangerous work in our town, paying them a wage, giving them the benefits that they could actually live in our community. Because right now, I could not find anybody who's working on one of these projects who would come and testify because everybody I've spoken to has said they can't afford to live in Montpelier. So I think we have an opportunity to change that. So I know that's a bit of a long introduction, Mayor, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
But again, I have invited some people who I think can be bigger experts on this than myself, having never worked in construction and answer a lot, if not all, of the questions that was put in that memo recently. So, thanks very much, everybody.
Great, thank you. So I know there are some folks here who might want to speak on this topic. We'd love to hear from you, number one. Number two, I know we've got probably a lot of questions that, you know, we want to dig into. And so I think we could probably do both of those things. I think it probably makes sense if there's just some general comments that folks would like to make on this, I think now would be a good time and then we'll get into some of the weeds on this topic. So Connor, is there anyone in particular that you were like, you know, I've invited these people here to, you know, like, I just want to make sure we're giving them?
Danielle and Larry and Tim, I know I was able to send them a copy of the questions yesterday.
Okay.
So they probably have some answers, but Danielle, maybe you would want to kick it off or Larry?
Yeah, I can go first.
Cool. And you're welcome to be here or sit at the table, either way is fine.
I'll stand here.
Great, okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you for having us back here to continue this very important conversation. I'm Danielle Bombardier, I live in Colchester. I'm an electrician, an organizer, and a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 300. Being a part of the IBW, I knew that I always made the same amount of money as any other apprentice or journey worker at the same level as me, not 84 cents to my male coworkers' dollar. I enjoy employer-paid health insurance and an employer-contributed retirement account. This is because I was fortunate to work for a responsible contractor. And the reason they were and still are responsible is because they signed an agreement with the union. They are contractually bound to be responsible, to pay a decent wage and provide benefits, to properly classify and register apprentices, and to provide a safe working environment. The union contract is one example of responsible contractor language and has proven effective over the course of history in strengthening the middle class. However, it's not the only way to ensure responsible contracting. This ordinance is another opportunity to provide necessary benefits to hard-working men and women. Think for a minute about the money that Montpelier taxpayers spend and want to spend to build and improve the capital city. If you can visualize these projects now, visualize the workers showing up every day to work on city improvements. Men and women in hard hats and car hearts constructing buildings and making infrastructure improvements that will last for decades after the job is complete. Most likely, these workers, depending on who they are, are not paid particularly well nor offered paid benefits and have little say in whether or not their hours are counting toward a registered apprenticeship program. I have met with countless helpers in my role as training director for the IBW who were promised apprenticeship wages in education but saw no follow-through. I've also had conversations with long-term employees of companies. They may be offered a health insurance benefit, but some of that cost would come out of their pay. At an average pay of $24 an hour for a licensed electrician in the state, I can tell you most cannot afford to lose any of them, even if it means going without health insurance. Montpelier has an opportunity to set an example for the state. The city website states that Montpelier has a strong job market that pays living wages and recognizes that to be prosperous, the Montpelier community must care for the physical and mental well-being of all residents. Your community, the taxpayers, and you, the elected officials, have a responsibility to ensure that anyone working on projects paid for with community dollars are offered a livable wage and proper benefits to ensure their well-being. As Connor mentioned, to treat those that work in your city with the same respect that you treat the residents that live here. The Vermont prevailing wage includes a percentage currently at 42.5% above the set wage, and I saw you had a packet here that included the prevailing wage. So the wages actually are 42.5% higher to account for the fringe benefits. And states without strong prevailing wage laws spend more on social welfare benefits for these workers. Yes, there is a state prevailing wage law that currently exists. It was passed right here in Montpelier. However, no town or city in Vermont has adopted a Responsible Contractor Ordinance to strengthen and build upon the state law. And this really needs to happen. This state must do more to increase wages for some of the hardest-working Vermonters. These are folks, including myself, who travel hours on the road to get to job sites, then work eight to 12 hours onsite, typically outside in grueling conditions, as we all know, in Vermont, performing manual labor, requiring years of training and skill. Pretty much a college degree to become a licensed tradesperson. I know that Vermont can do better. And the capital city has an opportunity to prove that. The facts are available, Larry will address some of those. The stories are out there. Vermont needs you, elected officials and leaders, to push this forward in order to give a better quality of life to its citizens working in construction. We build this city, but we can't afford to live in it. On behalf of the IBW and the Vermont Building and Construction Trades Council, I strongly support this Responsible Contractor Ordinance and I encourage you all to do the same. Thanks.
Just a quick question.
Thank you.
Danielle? Just a very quick question. I wanted to make sure I understood. You said that the state passed a law for this, but that no city has adopted it. Does that mean the state has to do this on their projects?
It's for state money.
So the state, the state's already doing this on their project?
Yes, $100,000 or more of capital funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all again. Hope you guys had a good summer.
Just pull the mic over.
I think there was snow on the ground the last time I was here.
It was just last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's true. It could have been this week, actually, went with a couple of those highs. But my name's Larry Mokwin, I live in Swan and I work with the Laborers International Union of North America. I'm here tonight to support this Responsible Employer Ordinance. To refresh your guys' memories, I'm a fifth-generation Vermonter, very proud of it. I grew up in a union household here in Vermont, graduated from Winewski High School in 1996. I jumped around from dead-end job to dead-end job once I graduated, and then when I was 20, my father forced me to join the union. Best decision that, or that he made for me ever. My pay immediately increased soon, obviously, I mean, you guys know. But the problem was, is I had to leave the state to work because the opportunities for the laborers in Vermont and the union aspect is very slim to none. This ordinance, a big portion of it is the attachment of the prevailing wages to the city-funded projects. There's some myths that claim that attaching prevailing wages will cost taxpayers up to 20% more for the construction projects. I'm going to debunk this, there's some statistics from Smart Cities Prevail, it's a nonprofit, nonpartisan research and educational organization. They receive their information from peer-reviewed empirical studies that are performed by respected academic organizations, and they definitely contradict the idea of that. Based on a 2012 Census of Construction Survey, labor costs for construction only account for about 17% of the project. So let's just say we're going to save 20% on this project by cutting wages for the workers. You're going to have to either not pay them or pay them well below federal minimum wages. States in this country that have weak or no prevailing wage standards spend $367 million a year on food stamps and earned income tax credits for construction workers only. And that's more than the states that have strong prevailing wage laws, which I believe there's 30 of them right now. The workers in those states with the strong laws actually can contribute over $5.3 billion more a year in federal taxes than the workers with the weak or no prevailing wage laws. Prevailing wages will actually strengthen local economies, and these studies are shown because they hire locally and raise wages of the middle-class workers. And in turn, that boosts the economy, creating other jobs in different sectors other than the construction sector. It's found that for every dollar paid in prevailing wages, it produces $1.50 in economic activity. Prevailing wage construction workers are also more likely to have health insurance and less likely to live in poverty. Nationally, the veterans that we all care about work constructions at higher rates than non-veterans. And in prevailing states with these laws, this number's even higher. And poverty amongst these veterans employed with the building trades in these states decreases by as much as 31%. By passing this ordinance, I believe Montpelier will be supporting local workers, spurring the economy, excuse me, the economy, and even help to cut taxpayer costs such as welfare subsidies. I know all of you here, as members of the council, as the city manager, assistant city clerk, you guys want to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars of the residents here in Montpelier. But I encourage you guys to consider the importance of the social responsibilities you have to and pass this ordinance. And that's all I have for you and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Dennis LeBowne from Lynderville and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly on this ordinance. Just for the record, we are 10,000 union members strong here in Vermont and that we do support this ordinance. As Councilman Connor Casey alluded to earlier about how dangerous the jobs are in construction, and as you may recall, we had a number of people that were either killed or seriously injured out on the highways this year, performing these construction jobs. And I highly doubt they were getting paid prevailing wages or even had, you know, benefits for healthcare or any other benefits that may be out there. And also, as, you know, Danielle said, I was at the State House working when they passed prevailing wage for the state. And I think it's, you know, it is the right thing to do to make sure that workers are getting a livable wage, just like minimum wage. I'm also at the State House supporting minimum wage. We need to put money into people's pockets so that they would have the funds to pay the rent. I'm sure Montpelier is, also has high rent, just like every place else in the state. It is hard for especially young people to find a place to rent, young families. We have many people that are on social programs. Paying a livable wage would help ease that. So again, I just want to reiterate that we do support this and we hope that you will pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Van Dusen, I'm a union rep with AFSMI Local 1369 in the city of Montpelier between home healthcare providers, Kellogg Hubbard Library, and support staff at the school. We represent more than 50 employees here in Montpelier. We also support this ordinance strongly and as public, for the most part, public sector employees, we feel very strongly that public money needs to be spent in the public good. And so the city of Montpelier, in our opinion, should not be putting taxpayer money towards jobs which are essentially paying poverty wages. We need to support a livable wage, we need to support this ordinance, and we need to have a sustainable economy here in Montpelier. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Daniel Bovin. I'm a direct product of everything that these three people just mentioned. I'm a new father, I've been a union worker for seven years now. We recently just moved into Northfield, we bought our own house. None of this would be possible if I wasn't a strong union member. I get up every morning at 4:00 in the morning, I have to walk my dog, take care of my child, drive an hour to work, sometimes an hour and a half, depending on where the job site is, and then I'm going to work for the next 10 hours in the heat or the cold. And all I want to do all day is go home to my son. But I have to put in these hours in order to make the life that I want for my son, and none of it would be possible if I didn't make the prevailing wage that everyone here is talking about tonight. So I really, I really support this bill or whatever the, you know, whatever it is. I'm not a very political person, so.
It's all good.
But yeah, I strongly support it and thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Well, and as we go, we can, if there's more comments we made, we can certainly continue the conversation. I would actually love to invite Donna Barlow-Kasey up, if you don't mind, because you made some comments here about the ordinance and I, I'm sure everyone had a, well, actually, did everybody have a chance to read them?
Just like half an hour ago.
Oh, okay. Well, and fair enough, so especially since they were sort of new, would you mind just like summarizing some of your comments and then, I know I've got some questions for you, so.
Sure. So first, this was a collective endeavor by the team in the Public Works Department. We are in support of a livable wage. We did have some concerns about language that would be adopted so that it would reflect practices and procedures that were clear, understandable, and consistent with how we practices and procedures that were clear, understandable, and consistent with how we operate job sites. And so that basically set the tone for thinking about what we had seen in the ordinance and what we would suggest would be workable in response to that. So if, and I can just go down the bullet points if you want.
Well, I might as well just ask my questions, I suppose. So I was very interested in the comment you made that you thought that this would simplify the processes involved. That's very interesting. Could you just describe how this ordinance might actually simplify your processes?
So I, the prevailing wage rates, and I provided a copy of just one of the pages, have a variety of levels depending on the job at hand. And if there was a rate that was the base rate, no matter what job you were doing, it would provide that livable ground wage for everybody. So even if the prevailing rate at the lowest end was less than that, it would not affect the prevailing rate if it were higher than that. It would just be a minimum standard that the city could budget for and bank on. And so that's how we were looking at that situation.
Okay, thank you. And are there any other questions? I don't want to hog time here, too, if you all have questions as well. No? Go ahead, Glenn.
I mean, it may be getting too far ahead of ourselves, but looking at the sample sheet of prevailing wage rates, you're right, there's a whole range of them, and there's a lot of them, and you say this is only one sheet of many.
Yes.
Do you have a sense what a reasonable base rate, like, did you have something in mind when you said "base rate"? Obviously, that's for us to determine, but.
Right.
Are we looking at the highest numbers here or the lowest in a way?
We didn't get, we didn't want to put that out. We can certainly think about that, but we didn't get into that level of discussion today.
Go ahead.
Sure. The other question that I had was, I'm trying to find, yes, your second point in Section 64, add language to make it apply to onsite laborers and not to other categories, for instance, officer-administrative workers. Can you explain why, the reasoning behind that?
From, so we're not trying to discriminate against office or administrative workers, but we were trying to set the rate for those workers who were working on the job in the community here and not in another state or, so we were wrestling with that. That was the intent of that. We were.
Thanks. That makes sense.
So I have another question about enforcement. So I was feeling like I had a couple of mixed messages on that point. There was, you know, one comment from the city's questions that was like, you know, we have a hard time getting people to complete time sheets. This might be, you know, even more difficult. What is your thought on the enforcement of this? Again, is this, how, what does enforcement look like in your take on this? Is it relatively easy? Is it not relatively easy?
We're envisioning that it should be relatively easy. That we hold the contractor accountable. We didn't, what we were struggling with was requirements that would have people sign in and out, a daily review. We're not a very large community in terms of our Public Works Department. We're feeling as if the number and the contracts that we award each year are not, we don't necessarily have to look at a daily sign-in, sign-out, validate that on the spot. We could do that in a weekly, monthly, preferably monthly situation where we're reviewing that kind of information. Better use of our staff's time and still having accountability.
All of the rest of my questions are basically like language-related. They're things that are logistics, basically, you know, things like, okay, so if we have basically a wage that we're setting, then like, how often does that get reviewed and who reviews it? Or, you know, actually, in looking at the document that Michael Sherman submitted to us, which was full of great information, you know, there was a clause, or a portion of his research that was about non-retaliation. And it occurred to me that that might be something that would be potentially relevant to this document as well. Anyway, there's lots of sort of smaller things that I, this, it doesn't feel like this is necessarily the right venue to talk about it, because like, these are things that we can figure out. At least that's where I am at. I will say, though, that one other thing that I am interested in is if, if it's not too onerous a task, if it were possible to collect a list of projects that we've done, let's say, in the last year, or perhaps, I'm not sure how long, how far we want to go back, five years, I don't know, of projects that this would have affected. I mean, I know that, you know, if the state is doing this, then, you know, that covers a certain subset of projects, but there may be some other subset of projects that are not covered. And again, to Michael's point in his letter to us, you know, it may end up only affecting a very small number of workers, but I'll just say for my part, anyway, if it's not, you know, causing us an extra FTE to review this, you know, if the cost is not substantial, then it's worthwhile even for the few number of workers. But that's, I know I'm starting getting into like where I stand, but I'm sure you all, others may have questions or want to express what, how they're feeling. So unless, Peter, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, if I might. I was on the Social and Economic Justice Committee, Peter Kalman. I was on the Social and Economic Justice Committee when Michael wrote that report, and he's not here tonight, so.
He's here, he's here.
Oh, there he is. Oh. All right, okay. All right, all right. Then I'm going to skip the part, I didn't see him, sorry. All right, so, but I just think there's some things that need to be discussed, not tonight. But notice the language. We've heard prevailing wage, living wage, minimum wage, and now flat base rate. And some of the same people have even used two different terms. We have to be really clear when we do this what we're talking about. Secondly, this is called here a Responsible Employer Ordinance. Somebody said, oh, it's actually a responsible contract ordinance, because this particular one only seems to apply to contractors. And that's where this conversation, are we talking about just the workers or also the people in the office? And then what about other community contracts? This seems to be about contractors. But again, very important to be clear about that. The issue that Bill asked about, the state law applies to state monies being expended. It doesn't apply to city monies being expended. Lots of projects have both in them.
Right. So my, the reason for my question actually was, if they have both monies in them, or actually if they have federal monies too, then we have to follow the rules of those people. So one of, what I wasn't completely sure about was if we're already having to do this for projects with state funding, then A, the contractors already know how to do this, and B, we're already managing it anyway. So I wasn't clear about that until Danielle said that. So that's, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't creating something that contractors aren't already used to working with.
Right. So just as you go forward, be sure about, it's a Venn diagram. There are some projects that are, or people who won't be covered just because of where the monies lie. And then finally, I think, and this is where maybe Michael will have more to say about it, but it's clear that this kind of an ordinance has symbolic value, the leadership and so forth. It is less clear in a municipality of our size whether or not it would affect that many people. And that is something that needs to be weighed. It needs to be thought about. There's not a simple answer to that. That's a sort of a moral, ethical, and financial decision. So I just would urge that this kind of, this ordinance be looked at very carefully from all these perspectives, and that you do bring in some of the people from the contract industry, not just the union people, and that you also bring in lower-income people who might not benefit from something like this at all, because if they were to earn more, they would fall into a benefits gap. So these are some things that need to be considered as well. It's a complicated, it's a very symbolically important ordinance, but only if unintended consequences don't result. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council, questions or otherwise? Donna?
A core question, I'm not sure, maybe it's Larry who I'm asking, but it could be anybody. The data comes from large cities that I read in the materials, and some of that was, in my mind, I was reading Michael's about livable wage, but likewise, I believe you quoted a study of 2012, 2013. There's nothing more current, and is there anything about small communities like us?
If you would come up to the mic so we can have the record of what you're saying. Thanks.
All this information that I was.
Sorry, hang on one second. Ashley, did you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to clarify, Donna, you were looking for information from like comparably sized areas, is that what you were asking about?
I'm asking if he had any to present, yes. So he's referring me to a website.
It's small, smallcitiesprevail.org. That's the actual, because what they say is with smaller cities and bigger cities, it all equals out. I mean, if we're going to go with Vermont, there is not a big city here.
It's not even a small city.
Right. So, I mean, I don't know if we can reuse that as an example of maybe a city of 8,000, but, I mean, and we can't use Portland, Maine as, because they're 200,000. But it has proven to not raise costs, because what actually happens is the fuel and the materials go down because there's less work order changes, redos of things because of the more skilled workforce that is brought in to the community. And these are more career jobs instead of just disposable jobs, because you have to think these construction workers only have so long until their body's going to give out on, so if you don't pay them, if you don't pay them now, you're going to pay for them later. And what we're doing now is paying for them now, and we're going to pay for them later, so.
Yeah, but it's not, I wasn't thinking so much as increasing costs, which is how you were using the statistics, but more to the point that Peter made of unknown consequences for people who are going, are in that gap and who are going to lose benefits. But yet, the prevailing wage, or whatever we label it, isn't quite bringing them up enough. So that's all. I'm just looking at unintentional consequences.
If you use Davis Bacon rates in this state, then you're not going to do anything. The state prevailing wage has done the legwork to see what you need to, because there's three separate areas. There's the metropolitan area, south, and then it's called the north, which is, you know, Montpelier, Washington County, Northeast Kingdom. And there's three separate rates. That's what the state has found to be what a good rate for each individual classification will be.
So instead of a flat rate that everybody, nobody's below this, the state has put out rates according to classifications.
Yes, if you're a laborer, you're going to pay this. If you're an electrician, if you're a flagger, you get paid this. But, so you'll look at, just say a laborer in Montpelier, I think it would be 17.32 an hour right now is what the state prevailing wage is, plus 42.5% for the fringe benefits of that 17.32. The federal Davis Bacon rate in Montpelier for all the highway projects, which will still stay the same, I believe, because the state pretty much attaches 2,000 bucks from the federal government to everything, so they can use the federal Davis Bacon wages. It's only 12.90, 12 dollars and 96 cents, and I think the fringe is maybe a buck. So, I mean, there's a problem. I mean, Chittingon County's even worse than that. So that's pretty bad to say. It's just if these surveys are not done by contractors, wages never go up. And the only contractors that do them are union contractors because they know the benefits. This 12, a flagger in southern Vermont, federal Davis Bacon is below Vermont minimum wage right now, like what the Davis Bacon says they should pay. So, I mean, this is just nothing that you guys would have ever known, because why would you, you know? Just like, I don't know everything that you guys are talking about tonight.
I know, but there is this aspect, again, and trying to look at the, is that Montpelier does pay a lot that support non-Montpelier residents.
Exactly.
And if you're telling me you can't afford to live here, and yet I'm supporting you on a prevailing wage, that's money that's going out of town. So you're living in a community that's cheaper because they don't do the same thing. So that's all.
No, and I understand.
Whether it's the water, the sewer, the street sidewalks being plowed, they just, they have a whole different level of their community. So as we're putting out, you know, we just need more people here.
Right. And by raising the wages, you might be able to get more people attracted to the city because, I mean, Calvin, Calvin used to live here but had to move because the wages weren't feasible for him to continue to live here, and he would like to live here if he could. He travels to New Hampshire every day to work right now because we don't have any work in the state. And he has to do that because he wants to have benefits in retirement.
Sorry, I can't help you with that right now. Thank you.
But that's what this is all about, is, and all, this has been done in other cities, and that website should be able to answer some of your questions. And I actually have some answers for the other questions from earlier, the 17 questions. So. Anything else?
Jack?
Before you sit down, I just want to, I think you misspoke. You said smallcitiesprevail.org. It's smartcitiesprevail.org.
Smart, you're right. Smart city, sorry.
I don't want people to go looking for the wrong place.
Right.
Get a not found.
Well, I appreciate that.
Did Google help you find that correction?
No, I was already at Smart Cities.
Lauren, and then I have one more question for Donna.
So I was wondering for, the issue was raised by the staff about the tracking of information, and I was just trying to get a better sense of how, on a site like this, how is the data tracked typically? Is what's in the ordinance, does that follow kind of best practices? And I think there's a question of, kind of, are we asking for information that's not already collected is one thing, and then there's the level of oversight by the city of that is a different question. So I just kind of ground-truthing from, we have experts here that might be able to speak to kind of, how is data usually collected? And are, does this language kind of jive with what's really done on the job sites right now?
Hi, I'm Tim LaBoumbarre, President of IBW Local 300. I know our contractors, because they have apprenticeships, they have to follow OSHA regulations, and they have to follow our construction bargaining agreement, which they're required to send in reports monthly. They do that and then some daily. It's part of the business. And most contractors should be following all of that stuff. OSHA requires you know who's on your job site that day, anytime, anywhere. So I know one of the questions was like, we can't even get the people to sign a time card. It's a hell of a way to run a business, you know, if something's wrong, something's broke. And I just want to, here's, Peter brought up this subject, I think he was probably talking about the fiscal cliffs, where somebody. up this subject, I think he was probably talking about the fiscal cliffs, where somebody getting more money wouldn't get social welfare, while the 42.5% above and beyond that hourly wage should be enough to cover the healthcare. That's what it's there for, for pensions, healthcare, whatever. And if the contractor isn't supplying it, and the people are buying it, they have to pay them in the check. But, you know, it's, it's just an equivalent. But all those forms, and they're out there, and it's daily business. In this day and age, you can't do anything about a paper trail or, or some form.
Thank you. Donna, I have a question for you. So, again, just referring to Michael's document and the research he did with conversations with Burlington, who has a sort of similar ordinance. So it sounded like they do sort of random audits. And so just in terms of the city's enforcement, is that some, is that something you would picture us doing with something like this? Or is there a different sort of monitoring or enforcement mechanism?
So, I can't, I don't want to suggest that we had an in-depth conversation about this aspect of it.
That's fair.
And, but what we, and so, we did talk about definitely maybe monthly basis mixed with random samplings. What we were trying to shy away from, and probably could be wordsmithed better, because this was pulled together today in between other things, would be, we don't want to have to be on the job site at the end of the day validating the paperwork that was, was taken care of during that day by the contractor, or by the onsite manager, by the people who were working. We know that happens on a regular basis, but we just don't have the staff bandwidth to do that. And we had seen that in some of the other ordinances or suggested language that we were looking at. So we need to move towards what we do want, and I, and I don't have a definitive answer for that right now.
That's okay. Well, because for me, that comes back to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, sorry.
That's all good. Go ahead.
I think, I think the important piece here, too, is there's also like a breach of contract. So, you know, there is, the company would be assuming the risk of litigation, you know, because they're in breach of contract. So, you know, I, I think we do have to have some way, and, you know, I would say like, giving notice about, you know, when an audit's going to take place, or whatever, is probably not the way to go about it. But, you know, like you may be subject to an audit of the following items, you know, or you will be subject to an audit, you know, once every 12 calendar months, and, you know, that will be, you know, will provide you with X number of days' notice of that, or something along those lines. But I don't think it would be wise for anyone to add as a daily, you know, monitoring in this situation unless, you know, unless we get a situation that arises where there is significant concern, but.
Yeah. So that sounds like an area we can continue to, to talk about. Any other comments at this point? So my thought is that we should probably have some further conversation about this. Look at some of the language, see if there's some tweaking that can be done, or some, just like getting into some of the details. And so I imagine there may be a group of people that might want to hammer that out together. Connor, do you have any thoughts on this? Yeah, go ahead.
No, I, like, honestly, I think city staff's recommendations are, you know, pretty helpful, and I don't think we're that far apart, except for obviously, the, you know, the question that was raised is the, what is the responsible rate? You know, what does that floor look like? But I'd be happy to sort of take out the draft, maybe talk to people from the city of Portland, answer any questions. And I guess with that, I'd make a motion to schedule the first public hearing for our next meeting, September 25th. I think two weeks is ample time to hammer some of these details out.
Don't lose.
I'm going to assume that's a, that's a second. I will say that sounds a little fast to me. I mean, I think it's possible. I, I don't know, other thoughts? I mean, if you wanted, yeah, thoughts on that, Connor?
I mean, other than the responsible rate, I think, most of this information is at our fingertips, and honestly, it takes a few days to hammer off.
Yeah, Donna?
Well, after you hammer it out, I'd like more time to read it than I've had to read these. So I would appreciate more time, but.
How would you feel about, because I know you want to like, get moving on it. What if we didn't, you were saying it for our next meeting? What if we set it just for the meeting after that? Just give yourself like a month.
I just, so I think from staff, that would be great. And also, I think we have a pretty long meeting at the next meeting, so that's, otherwise, I mean, I agree with you, we're not that far off, but it would be, but keeping it moving would be good.
I'll amend my motion for a month from October 9.
Thank you. Okay, fair enough. And Ashley, that's okay with you, if it's, what, the October, what did we say, 9th meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, because I think that does keep it, keep it moving, but gives us a little time to set some meetings and have some conversations, so. Yeah, cool. Thank you. All right. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Donna?
There is one piece that I would like you to look at, that it says no independent contractors. I really disagree with that, because it's not just construction workers. And anyway, so that, to me, needs a lot further definition.
We'll grab the coffee and chat about it.
Maybe some tea.
Fair enough.
Negotiating over beverages already.
Okay. Well, and thank you all for your thoughts and comments on this, and keep the conversation going. So, the next item was a discussion of the livable wage ordinance, which was...
Slightly, a slightly different thing.
Fair enough.
I think that's actually what Michael's comments were more addressed toward, not to speak for Mr. Sherman, but was more toward the notion of a livable wage ordinance, which did go to all of our contractors, but I...
Would you like to come up and make any comments, Michael?
Maybe they're similar, I don't know.
They, they seem similar, but not, not quite. Anyway, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, Michael Sherman, I live in Montpelier, and I'm here, I suppose, as a representative of the Social and Economic Justice Committee, Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee. And we got this request to do some, you know, to advise, to give some information to the council on the question of a livable wage. And I want to be very clear, I don't consider myself an expert on this. What I know is what I found in a few weeks of reading. And, and, and that's pretty much, and that's now several months ago, and I'm of an age when several months ago might as well be a generation ago. Okay. So, I haven't heard anything that's inconsistent with what I presented to you through this memo. And I also want to say that this, this came, what the, we did not vote on this, but we voted to pass the memo along. Okay. So we're not bringing a recommendation. We're simply, we were simply forwarding this information. So I don't see anything that's inconsistent in what I've heard up to now. But what I do think is important in this is to look at the, some of the information that talks about what you have to be careful about when you design an ordinance like this. And that's the material on pages six and seven. That, you know, some basic, real basic questions, how far down, for example, contractors, subcontractors, subcontract, sub-subcontractors, how far down will the ordinance, you know, be effective? Because that's, that's one way to figure out how far the reach is in what you're doing. The other, there are also questions about, are there exemptions? And I, I did look at a few. There are, Burlington has an ordinance that's been going on for several years now, and they have, they write in, they wrote into that ordinance exemptions that would be very important. Here, for example, we give money away to a whole bunch of nonprofits in the city, and most nonprofits can't really be, can't afford to be paying the kind of wages that are being offered at, at contract levels. And they're, they're just getting by. So do you want to exempt them from the, from this kind of ordinance? Or do you want to somehow protect those workers as well? And I think obvious, I think actually, there are more people working in the nonprofit sector in Montpelier than there are in construction and the for-profit center. And so that would be, this would...
And more women.
Right. So that, that would be a really important, an important thing to look at, how far, how far down and how wide. And then there are questions about seasonal workers, full-time workers, what constitutes continuity in a job, how many seasons before the person is counted, is one way, you know, I think in one, in one case, five seasonal, seasonal jobs then makes a person eligible for the coverage under the livable wage, the livable wage ordinance that I, that I, that I read about. There were, there were a few other things. But I urge you to take a look at pages six and seven, as you start to craft what you're going to do with the ordinance that Connor has proposed. What I, what I read confirms what, what the folks before were saying, that it does not have an adverse effect on the cost. What I will add to that is the point that I did include, that it actually is to the benefit of the employers, because their people stay longer, and they are not involved in constantly replacing people and constantly training. And I'll give you a personal example on this. My son is a paramedic, working in a town outside of Chicago. That town pays paramedics $11.40 an hour. Consequently, the paramedics are cut in and out, and they're constantly, they are understaffed, people are leaving, my son has to leave, he can't afford to live like that. They're losing good paramedics, they have to start training them all over again. And so one, one benefit of an ordinance like this is that there is continuity on the job, and expertise, and it means that everything goes more efficiently and smoothly, and you don't have interrupt, you don't have work interruptions. So I think that's one thing to add to what you've already heard. And I didn't put that in the memo, because that didn't seem like an appropriate place to put it. But it's something to keep in mind. There are questions about methodology. I think the, the fact that there is this, this document, which does provide information about what, who's getting what, is helpful, because one of the questions is who, who determines what's a livable wage, and how frequently do you revisit that? I think Burlington does it every year. They, they hire a panel of people to, or one or two people to do that. The other important thing is to think about the costs of monitoring and enforcing, and how that's going to be done. Burlington has enforcement, monitoring enforcement divided mostly in the attorney's, in the city attorney's office, but also in the personnel office. But the person I spoke to there said that they, actually, much of this really can be done by not, not a paralegal, not, doesn't, didn't need to be a lawyer. But you do have to have somebody who has expertise watching over this, and figuring out who's in conformance, informants, and then what do you do about it? And how do you enforce, how do you enforce it? Another point that hasn't, wasn't mentioned is how do you start to educate the contractors, so that you don't pull this surprise on them all of a sudden? And so, getting this information out as part of the bid package is, is really important, and also educating the workers about their rights in this. So, I, that's really all I can add, and everything I know is here.
It's a lot, Mike.
Well, there's one other thing, and that is, when I, as I was going through this, I was, I kept trying to find where are the voices of dissent? And I didn't find any. The only one is the panel that was convened by the state, and that, that raised the question about what happens with the fiscal cliff, okay? And that was the only voice of dissent that I heard. And I was looking through purposely in the literature to find it. And I think the absence of it is either negligence on my part, or not really good research methodology, or that the people that I was reading weren't citing it, which is also a possibility, or that it's not really there. And if I were to take more time to do this, and had access to a much larger library, you know, I would work harder to see if I could find the dissent. But I didn't find any, and I think that's significant.
Thank you. And your comments are making me wonder about one other question. I guess it's, it's honing a question really for me, which is just the, sort of the, with something like the responsible employer's ordinance, if we were to look backwards and say, you know, these are the handful of projects, or whatever, that this would have applied to, I know we don't necessarily have an enforcement mechanism now, but once that becomes clear, if we were, if we were able to somehow estimate what that would cost us, because, I mean, my, one place where I was starting as a threshold, that was like, is this going to cost us an extra FTE, which it sounds like it's not. And it also sounds like it's going to be relatively minimal, you know, it might be like, you know, so many hours of someone's time over the course of a year, or, or whatever. And so, my guess is that that number's going to be relatively small. And I don't know if that's an easy thing to, to estimate, but even just having a ballpark number in that, I think would be helpful. Yeah, Donna?
Michael, you mentioned, it didn't have to be a lawyer, but you inferred that it should like be somebody with some paramedic, paralegal experience?
Right. And that was, Mr. St. James was, that's his suggestion. He's the, he's the attorney in the city attorney's office that I spoke with, had a long telephone conversation. And as I mentioned in the memo, I'd sent the questions in advance, so that he could have some preparation. And what he said was, mostly this is stuff that a paralegal can manage. There are, there are very few issues, incidents where they really had to call in a lawyer. And I guess the one thing that I saw in your, in your draft was that I could see more opportunities for lawsuits in the, in the way you wrote that than, than need to be, than, than what you would want. And so I, I think it would be some, you know, important to start looking at, at how you can minimize the conflict.
Do you mean lawsuits against the city, or against the employers?
Both ways.
Both ways, okay. That would be very valuable information.
So we want two on this other committee.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, at this point, I don't, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of distance between the one, the one document and the other.
And the other question I have for you is, you know, when I think about the Venn diagram of a living wage, livable wage ordinance, and the responsible employer ordinance that we just discussed, that Venn diagram is significantly overlapping for me, and I'm not sure, and I'm not, I'm not sure that I could articulate how they might be different. Because have we, have we effectively talked about the, you know, a living wage by having talked about the responsible employer ordinance? Yeah?
One distinction I would make is, the wage is one thing, but the responsible contractor or employer, you're right, they re-publish, you should get a uniform on it, definition of that. It goes well beyond just wages, the responsible contractor ordinance.
Okay.
All right. The, the ordinance that Burlington has, and typically, livable wage ordinances make a distinction between those contractors that offer health benefits and those that don't. So the livable wage number is higher for those contractors that don't offer health insurance, to make up the difference.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Jack?
Thank you for all this work. I think it's great. One of the things that I would suggest is that we're hearing about the danger of a benefits cliff, and how does, how do we confront that? And I know that there are people, where I work in my day job at Vermont Legal Aid, Vermont Legal Aid is a member of the Vermont Living Wage Coalition, and I know that there are people at Vermont Legal Aid who are experts in... and I know that there are people at Vermont Legal Aid who are experts in public benefits and probably could help us address that question. You know, I'm pretty sure that the Living Wage Coalition has, has already addressed that in, in advocating for an increase in the state minimum wage. So maybe afterwards, we could talk about connecting with someone at, at Legal Aid who, you know, I haven't done benefits work in years, but I know there are people who do it.
Peter, thank you also.
I, that's great, Jack, but again, minimum wage is different than livable wage is different than prevailing wage. And so you've got to analyze those things very carefully. Minimum wage, the evidence is probably pretty clear, well, I'm not even going to say, but you've got to look at each of those. And the diff, the, one other big difference between a responsible, besides what Connor said, which is it deals with much, much more the, the wages, but also this is a contractor, this is construction work. These guys are talking about dangerous work outside, blah, 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 blah. The livable wage for, for, in Burlington covers all subcontracting, and that's why Michael is concerned about some of the nonprofits that, that, that we give money to. So that, that's where, that's where the Venn diagram really diverges.
Thank you. That brings up a follow-up question for me. So, you know, I think about our contract that we have with Just Basics. Would that fall under the-
Do we still have a contract?
Well, I know we sort of brought in-
The dues catering, you mean?
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I'm thinking, because I know we brought in under our house, basically, a lot of their services, but I thought we still-
We still contract for services with them.
Right, right.
Right. So depending on where we set thresholds, they could conceivably fall under this. Sorry if I'm-
Threshold, that's another thing to be thinking about, is the threshold.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, as I'm thinking out loud here, this isn't a serious policy proposal-
Sure.
At this point, but you know, as, as we think about what's the, the difference, the distinction between the two, maybe there's, you know, a big number that Connor's proposed, and DPW that is this full contracting ordinance, and then, you know, after that, it just, it goes to the lesser livable wage ordinance, and then below that, it's just what it is. It's the way it is now. So that, I mean, we, you know, we're not going to hit everybody, but at least we're trying to hit where we put our bigger dollars.
Yep.
And ease of administration, it becomes one regulation versus two.
Yeah. That, is that something that we, you know, y'all can incorporate into your conversations about tweaking this potentially, or do you want to deal with that separately?
I mean, I, I really do believe they are two separate animals there, but I, no, I think it's worth a broader conversation.
Okay.
Talking about that. Again, as Peter said, there's a distinction between somebody hanging out on a beam all day, you know, and, and some other nature of work, but, yeah, I, I think it's a broader conversation.
Well, and it also may make some sense, if this, if this part of it, if the responsible employer part of it is somehow easier to enforce or to think about as a first step, that it may be, maybe we, we do that first and see how it works, and, and then look into, you know, the potential for broadening it or having other thresholds. I'm open to that too. Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
I mean, in a couple places, it says procuring construction services, but in other places, it just talks about employer and contracts. So if you get more explicit about it, that might be a good place to start. If that's what you really mean, is construction. And only construction.
Yeah.
Over two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, fair. That, that would narrow it certainly. Yeah, thank you. Other comments or thoughts on this topic? Okay. Thank you, and thank you again, Michael, for your work on this. This was fabulously thorough and easy to follow, and anyway, it was very helpful. So thank you so much. Yeah. Okay. All right, moving along here. We, I think I said we were going to do chapter nine licenses, and then we were going to move on to the event fees, and then the appointment to the legal cities and towns. Just to clarify, are we, I don't know if we're keeping anyone here for the event fees that would otherwise be taking off. Okay, just checking before-
No, I don't see anybody.
Okay. Great. So moving on to chapter nine of the ordinances, licenses. Thoughts, comments on this? Lauren?
Two things kind of popped out at me. One is on page or section nine, eleven, which is dealing with licenses for inns, hotels, motels, and so on. It just raised for me the question of how are we dealing with things like Airbnb at this point? Because the way it's described, I would think they would actually fall under that. I don't imagine most are getting a license, and I just, us having clarity on do we think they should or not, I think we would have to provide some clarity in this language to address it one way or the other.
Pretty question. I had that same question myself. Connor?
Yeah, like actually follow-up question. Did Burlington tackle that recently? I thought the Airbnbs or-
So I think what, what's occurred with Airbnbs is that the state worked with Airbnb, so now they are collecting their, you know, meals, rooms and meals tax from them. And so we are, because we collect a local option, we get our share. So I think that's, that's been the biggest thing. I don't know that, I don't know what's happened with licensing. I don't think we're licensing them now.
I had a similar question actually, but regarding taxis, you know, are, are we doing something similar with Ubers or Lyft? That was a later section. Uh, go ahead, Lauren.
Well, and, and on the taxi question, I was also looking at the definition of taxi cab, and I think the new micro-transit might actually fall under that definition inadvertently because it says vehicles operating on a regularly scheduled route and time do not have to follow this, but if we're doing this new on-demand service, just, I would think we do not want to have to, they're going to have their own whole process and things, so we don't want to call them taxi cabs necessarily, or we should just be clear that that is what we intend.
Yeah, fair. Other comments? Uh, Donna?
Well, and I would like to see us do a definition of Airbnb, because there are some that really operate as a self-standing apartment and are not really in the intention, so I think we have to work on that aspect.
Jack?
There is some information available. There is a report that was, that the state did, and Kevin Casey has discussed that information with the Housing Task Force, and so we can, or, or might be worth just talking to Kevin to see, well, I think it's possible to even know exactly how many property owners were involved in short-term rentals in Montpelier during the course of a year. And so there's data. I, I like the idea of licensure. I think that there was a state, there is a proposal to require registration or licensure at the state level. It did not, it was not adopted, but I definitely think it's worth looking at.
I agree. I have a whole bunch of questions, so unless others have stuff they want to jump into. Okay, as long as we're looking at it, section nine, two oh one, about transient auctioneers. Part, I, I know this was a definition, and it has a later section as well. I was a little bit baffled as to like, wow, why do we have this section? This feels very archaic. Just like imagining like a traveling auctioneer. I wonder if we need to keep it, and even if somebody did come through who was a traveling auctioneer, like, do I care? Why should I care? Why, why should we be licensing that person? Or, like, which is really like, why did that exist in the first place? I don't know.
Probably scam artists, flimflam artists, those kind of things.
Yeah, selling-
To make sure somebody honorable and knew what they were doing.
Yeah, selling snake oil. Yeah. It feels, what's that? Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I, it seems to me like that's the kind of thing we could potentially take out. Yep, uh, Jack?
I think auctioneers are licensed at the state level. So I think there's a lot of things like this that we might compare what we have in this with what is also already regulated at the state level. We'll see, well, do we need to do anything that the state is already doing?
Yep, fair. That sounds good to me. Section nine, two oh two, about use of the public streets. I was a little worried that we had somehow inadvertently prohibited parklets or like commercially related parklets because of nine, two oh two.
Or the farmer's market.
Or the farmer's market, yeah, fair. So just want to flag-
So I want to say unless with permission.
Yeah, yep, some kind of modification there to make sure that it's like been checked by somebody. Also, I think it says something about, we're in public space, and that would also include, you know, the vending of anything in front of City Hall, I think. And so again, you know, we, we don't want to prohibit that.
And we do have places for how those are dealt with in another place.
Yep. Okay, in section nine, uh, nine, five oh two, this just seems, I'd, I like, just super particular. I, I mean, I know that we don't have any bowling alleys or, I mean, I guess we do have a shooting gallery. I don't think we have any skating rinks, but even so, gambling at those places, it just seems highly particular. I mean, are those places prone to gambling? Or like, if we were worried about gambling happening, would we pick these places? I, I don't know. It just seems kind of random.
Well, you may be betting on the outcomes of games.
Well, right, but if that's what we're worried about, like, then it shouldn't be happening at the ball field or, you know, any, anyway, it just, I just wanted to flag that as like confusing and perhaps overly specific.
Let's allow gambling.
Do we, I mean, do we have, do we allow? Yeah. Yeah, isn't that already prohibited? Is that not a thing? I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was in, listening to a trial in court many years ago, and the police officer was talking about how you could tell if a pool table had been used for gambling.
What? Wow.
And the answer is you could tell because the felt would be nicked up because when they're using it for gambling, what that really means is that they're throwing dice on it, and so you could see the marks from where, where dice had fallen on it.
Well, right, I mean, in that case, like, are we, if we're really worried about this, would we not include pool tables? I, I'm not advocating for that. I just-
I think what you're getting at, and I don't want to cut you off on-
No, no, go for it.
Because you're kind of on a roll, but I, I think the whole, part of the purpose of this whole exercise is to go through and find what is in our ordinances that doesn't need to be in our ordinances, and, and there's, there are things like prohibition of gambling that is probably also already covered by state law, and if it's already covered by state law, I would just as soon not bother having it in our ordinances. There's like, and, and there's a whole lot of other things that, or a number of other things I thought of that also hard to see why we need to be licensing. Bowling alleys, shoe shine operations, movie theaters. I'm not sure what public sa- health or safety or other benefit the people of Montpelier derive by having those licensed and regulated at the city level.
Agreed.
So I didn't come in with a lot of more deletions, but I think it's worth looking, considering doing that.
Yeah.
You're in the pocket of the blacksmith lobby, aren't you?
Well, the one blacksmith I know doesn't have his, his smithy here in, in the city of Montpelier. Oh.
Go ahead.
Did you open the public hearing?
I don't think I did. For this?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't think I did. I'm going to officially open the public hearing on chapter nine. Sorry, thank you. You're so good. There are a couple of what I think might be typos, so I'm going to just email somebody about that. There were a couple places where we're listing the costs of, I think it was either the licenses or the fees, and wondered why those were still in there. I think we had taken out most of those, so just thinking about consistency. Ooh, I was going to sneeze, but apparently not. Oh, we're, apparently we're banning rendering, like bone boiling? That was, I mean, the only context I have for that is like the eighteen hundreds or like things I've seen in movies. What's that?
I feel really strongly that needs to-
That needs to stay? Yeah, yeah, definitely. Maybe that was a huge problem at one point. I, I feel like we could take that out. I'm just going to put that out there. And I think, I think my only other-
Bone broth is a thing now, right?
What's that?
Bone broth is a thing.
Bone broth is a thing. It's fine. Yeah, I also had a comment about the, the shoe shining thing. I just wrote in capital letters the question, why, in my notes. Why are we doing that? And that's, okay, and that is it for me. Thank you. Sorry. Lots of detail there. Other thoughts? Uh, Lauren?
... meeting without me bringing up something about toxic chemicals.
Awesome.
Um, under dry cleaners, it lists some, if you carry on the business of dry cleaning using gasoline, naphtha, benzene, or other combustible or explosive gases or fumes, you need to be licensed. That's crazy that that was what was used, but now we still use things like PERC and other toxic chemicals that do cause problems for communities when they contaminate groundwater and things. So maybe we want to add in just a phrase about or other harmful chemicals, like this seems to limit to explosives or combustibles. Maybe we could just add in the word toxic or something.
We would have to probably define that, but yeah.
Yeah, I think we could come up with a phrase that-
I-
If, if we're going to keep some licenses for stuff like this.
Uh, well, I remember having this conversation, gosh, years ago, when we, we were talking about what kinds of things might we want to keep licenses for, and dry cleaners definitely came up, and I think gas stations also came up, and in part, it was because even if, so if there was a problem, sure, maybe the state is keeping track of that, but, you know, from the city's perspective, would we have any city-level repercussions or ways to hold people accountable as well? And for, for those two things, I, I could imagine we, we might want those kinds of industries to be licensed.
For the dry cleaners, it was more of a record that they were in that location in terms of what might happen in the future, but certainly, I'm wondering if for the use of the specific chemicals, if there is a state regulation. I put a note to check on-
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
I don't know, but I would assume today's day and age, there is. And the, the dry cleaners that we have here in Montpelier are just, you know, take them off site, and then we don't actually have dry cleaning in Montpelier. It's just pick up and drop off, so.
Well, and it also makes me wonder about, I mean, for the same purpose, I mean, there are other industries that use chemicals that end up in the soils, and that can be, that might be hard to quant, like enumerate, you know what I mean? Like, it's this industry and it's that industry or whatever, and if we wanted to call those out specifically, but, I mean, I, I would be open to or interested in thinking through what, what that might look like. You know, I think of like the, the, you know, Teflon industry in southern Vermont, and obviously, I mean, that might be a little reactionary, but try to think through like, okay, so what, what type of industry was doing that, and how would we have a, a record for ourselves if anything similar were to come from Montpelier? Yeah.
I mean, I know a couple ways in, that I've seen in state laws dealing with this stuff. I mean, either some laws just have, you know, if you use more than, pick a number, a thousand gallons of chemicals on a certain list that the- gallons of chemicals on a certain list that the state maintains, then you would need to get a license, so it could be that simple. Or they have like standard industrial classifications that would cover a range of industries and you could just put the codes and they're kind of maintained. But if we're trying to get at the users of chemicals that might cause problems for the community, it might just be as simple as saying, you know, users and pick the level that feels appropriate that we feel like might have a kind of public-
That feels like concern down the road. That feels like the kind of thing that, as a policy discussion, I wouldn't necessarily expect staff to come up with that unless you feel like you could. But, but that, maybe that's a conversation that, you know, if there's interested counselors that we can have that, like, I mean, like, I'm happy to have that conversation with you and see if we can figure out some proposed language unless, I mean, I just hate to push that off to city staff, unless you thought that was clear enough direction. I don't know, what, what, what do you think?
Donna?
Donna says yes. So you can, you all can work that out? Okay, you'll work it out. Fabulous.
Yay!
Excellent. Thank you. Cool. Further thoughts? Okay. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, unless there's any public comment. Okay, on to event fees.
Do you need to, why don't we just make a meeting?
Oh, thank you, yep, yep, you're right.
Should we schedule a second public hearing?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I move that we schedule a second public hearing on this ordinance. Probably not the next meeting because we're told it's a long meeting anyway, and doing some of this work could be a while. So I would say for the first meeting in October.
October ninth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? October ninth, yep. Okay, thank you.
Just-
Yes, go ahead.
You keep referring to the next meeting being long, do we need to start earlier? I mean, how long is it?
No, no, it's not, not crazy long, it's just, because we've had other stuff that's gotten pushed back, so, you know, I look at-
Well, you didn't give us that nice printout.
Well, it's-
See, every time I print it out, you show up with one, so I didn't print it out to have for a reference tonight.
Oh.
Oh, that's okay.
No, it's my fault.
Speaking of which, could we actually get the board going again, if it's doable?
Would you prefer the board to the sheet?
Yeah, save the paper.
I prefer the board, but that's, just so we can have a-
And it is also in your weekly memo every Friday, the meeting schedule, so people can see what's going on.
Yeah, I like the board.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. All right, so, on to, oh, right, the event fees.
So, you know, we, we've kicked this around, as you recall, we had this discussion after Senator Sanders' event about whether to charge or not and what, under what circumstances. And we, in that case, we, you know, they voluntarily paid, which was nice. As staff, we discussed this, and I think obviously we're interested in where you're at, we, we realized there's, there's a few distinctions. One is when the city itself, or through Montpelier Live throws an event, like July third or something, it seems kind of strange that we would pay ourselves for an event that we are doing, so those ought to be exempted. We talked a little bit about political events like Senator Sanders', and I think, you know, presidential campaign kind of thing was clear. We don't really get big state campaigns, rallies, I mean, maybe a gubernatorial, maybe. But then where does something like the Women's March fall? Where does some of these other things fall? Are those protests, are they rallies, are they political events? What, what are they? Some of them cost a lot of money, so I think that's a consideration. I mean, our proposal was certainly for entertainment-type, it, well, and so, and to that, at what point do charging the fees push someone into just doing the protest without getting the permits? It's been, for us, it's better to be prepared and know it's coming and have adequate staff than it is to get caught by surprise. So I think those are just things to think about. For, for entertainment events, our proposal was simply, if it's not city-sponsored, we would charge the actual costs. And I'll put in a, a provision where, and this is again up to you, where the group could come to the council seeking a waiver on that and make the case that there's, it's in the public interest to, to have that, to have that event. And, you know, a variation of that might be costs above a certain dollar amount, so that, you know, we're not chasing them around for a couple hundred dollars every event, but if it's above five hundred dollars, then they've got to pay. So, those were, you know, as far as we got, we really couldn't come up with a better system because it's, we have so many different types of events, and so we were wondering, you know, again, we kind of seized this on the, on the heels of the Senator Sanders' events, the presidential campaign event, and wondering what the thinking still was about that. And then we'd be happy to work on more based on what you tell us.
Glenn?
I kind of like the way it worked with Senator Sanders' campaign, and in a way, given that we get lots of different sorts of organizations and events, given that we, as I understand, we have not charged for any past events, and the first one we asked for any money was the campaign rally. And given, for example, that there, some of the larger events might also sometimes be the less organized ones, the ones that, you know, a small disorganized group calls it, and then tons of people show up. And then if we're billing the small disorganized group, I don't know how well that would, would work. So I wonder if, if it makes sense to say something like, I mean, I like your, the idea in the memo about the threshold. I wonder if we said something like, the city will cover up to threshold. Past that, because it does cost us money, we will send a, an accounting of, of what it costs and request, or, or, you know, suggest that, that we be reimbursed, but, but not an invoice, I don't know, does that make sense?
So, that, I would guess that we probably would get very little success with that. Yeah, so we have some events, like for example, the Corporate Cup is a good example, that's a big event, closes down a lot of streets, costs us a lot of money, I think it's four or five thousand dollars it costs us. And this year, they did make a contribution to it. It's also for, you know, charitable event, so, but it is definitely an impact on the city, not just our own direct cost, but residents, you know, it has a huge impact. You know, Burlington uses, and I think there's an example on your desk, they actually sign, you know, people sign contracts if they want to have public events, you know, how we have, it's, we would picture if we were going to have a fee for people, particularly if they're requesting a street closure and those kinds of things, then it becomes part of their fee. So you're going to have this, you need, you're going to need, you know, I think in Burlington's the threshold is anything that requires an officer to come in on overtime, other than what we would normally have on duty. So if we have to bring extra people in, then they sign a contract that they're going to pay for, for those additional costs, and that could be, police could be fired, you know, we, I mean, people don't think about, you know, public works ends up coming in to set up barricades and clean up trash and, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of costs that people don't always think about for big events, we might add an extra EMT on that day or two. I know Burlington told us that they, even with nonprofits that have them, they, you know, they balk, but they, they push them and they do it, and eventually they sign and they do pay because that's what it costs to run the event. It's just, you know, we just talked about fair labor, and I realize that in this case, our, the people are, the workers are getting paid, but it's a cost of running an event that someone is asking that other people pay for, or the rest of us pay for, and, you know, may, so will there be times when someone marches and didn't get a permit? Yes, that's going to happen, and we just have, you know, we are the capital city, that's going to happen. But if someone's planning event that's going to take over our streets or cause cost, maybe we ought to say to them, well, it's going to cost seven hundred and forty-nine dollars to the city for doing it.
Karen?
What happens with, like, something like the Do Good Festival, Bill? It's like a massive event, I saw we had a bunch of city staff up there. Is that something that's like worked out with National Life?
So we, of course, it's not on a public space. I don't know, I know we did keep track of the costs, and I can't remember if they paid it, I, I can find that, I just don't know the answer to that. But I know we did keep, yes.
Yes, they, they paid the donation of a-
Yeah.
Do you remember what it was?
Two thousand, a thousand for police and a thousand for fire.
Okay.
So, so I think if we had a regulation that said it was actual cost, then I don't think it'd be an issue.
Donna?
Well, I like the consistency of a regular cost and that we're really upfront about it, and if necessary, we'll negotiate after the fact if it's more than, than the organization can handle. But I prefer to set a fee, or a contract that infers some fee.
And then perhaps they could request a waiver for that fee. Jack?
I'm a little torn about this. For one thing, obviously the city's incurring costs and it, it's an attractive idea to recoup those costs. On the other hand, there's a lot of things, even though, whether we agree or disagree with the political entity that's having a political event, I think it's a good thing that these events are happening in the, in the capital city. And by the same token, you know, it seems as though almost every month, we have at least one request on the consent agenda for a street closing for some kind of event. And, and I think that's a great thing because it's, it really contributes to the vitality of the city. And, you know, I'm, I wouldn't want to do anything that discourages that or makes it, makes it not happen, so-
And to be clear, not every event requires us to add people, you know, a street closure for a block party in the neighborhood, we don't put extra people on for that unless they tell us they're expecting, you know, a thousand people or something, in which case it's a whole different event. You know, many, you know, the walks for causes, you know, we, we give permits for those, but we don't, there's no extra cost to deliver that service, and even if someone's doing a quick march up the street and we help them up state street, we usually don't put extra people on. It's, it's, I think the idea is the ones where you have to, to call people in, and, you know, it's, it's, as you heard Captain Martel describe a couple of meetings ago, it's, it's just hard enough to get the people, much less, you know, then deal with the costs and all of that, so. I mean, it's, it's really your decision, I, I think it comes up each year at budget time, too, when we, we look at our costs and we say, well, this is one of those things that we're, we're paying for, and it's perfectly appropriate for the city council to say, these are things that we welcome in our community, we understand it's the cost of being the capital city and, and will bear those, but it's just, it's, we should do that wide open. And we did make the decision to ask, at least in that presidential campaign, for the payment of our costs, and we received them voluntarily. And, and you asked that this come back, so we're, this is, this, you know, we're, this is a sticky issue, that's why the staff was, we thought we'd be able to come back, oh, here's our recommendation, and it's, it's hard, and so I don't know.
Stephen, did you have a comment or question?
Just a quick question on the, the parking charge for the Sanders' event. I believe it was on a Saturday, so I wondered why there's a charge for parking, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I'd have to go, I don't know, unless they did some, they may have done staging the day before.
Okay.
So they shut off a meter, probably.
Yeah, they probably did set up the day before, I would imagine.
The other question I had that, you know, given that this is the state capital, where a lot of people come to speak, whether there isn't, you know, even a sort of a constitutional question about, you know, the, the right of assembly, first of all, and secondly, you know, the right of free speech, you know, and whether, you know, you should be charging, you know-
So again, I don't think there's any, so we did think about that, and, and I don't think, we're not charging anyone to speak, and we're not preventing anyone from having their event. And certainly, you know, well, July third is our, our event, but say it wasn't, you know, we incur a lot of costs on that day, the Corporate Cup, that's not, you know, that's an event that's tying up our streets and using our resources, and it's just saying, hey, the taxpayers of the city are paying for this, but people are coming from all over, and it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's not something we would normally pay for. And, you know, and I think when protests happen, they're, they're often, they don't get permits, and so we do end up bearing that cost, and I don't know that there would be any real way to bill them after the fact, and we're talking about big things, so, but I, but you're right, I mean, that is the conundrum, right? We are, we are the host of that kind of conversation statewide, and what's our role in it?
Just to, just to respond to what you said about protests, and I wonder, you know, especially, we're going to have a, a big protest of some sort on the twentieth, I think most of it's going to be happening in Burlington, you know, concerning climate change. But I just wonder, you know, if you, you're going to have difficulty drawing a line between, you know, a really important protest like something, you know, concerning climate change versus other causes that might be, you know-
Well, I can't speak for the city council, my professional opinion would be that we would not want to get into the business of deciding which, which political issue is more important than which other one, or which side we wanted to be on, or which candidate we thought was more important than another. I think it's got to be what it is, and we, you know, if people have a freedom of speech and assembly, they should be free to, to articulate whatever concerns are on their mind. There could be an anti-climate change.
That would be absolutely unconstitutional to impose a content-based discrimination on who gets charged and who doesn't.
Yeah, fair. Lauren, anything further?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I definitely err towards the feeling of this is part of what makes our city vibrant, we're the city capital, it's a cost that we bear, but it's also brings people into the city who hopefully are using our great restaurants and shopping and doing other things while they're in town, and I, I think it does become hard to, then, you know, for granting waivers, then we are kind of getting into the business of deciding who we think is a worthy public cause. So it seems like that could become challenging to say who, who would we or wouldn't we? Even the case with Senator Sanders, I was thinking about that after we made that decision, and I was imagining that some other presidential candidates would not have voluntarily paid, and so then are we penalizing good actors and bad actors are getting away with it for free? So I, I was kind of feeling like that wasn't a great, great approach potentially, so I kind of erred more towards the, I mean, I think maybe keeping track and I keep thinking about it, but I'd rather keep it as part of the, what we do as the city of Montpelier is where I'm leaning.
Donna?
Bill, could you remind us, I believe you gathered some cost, what we were paying and how much overtime?
We have in the past, I don't know if we have it.
Can I have the example from the Sanders' event? That we have.
We, we have tracked it and we can get it for you, we, we have done it in the past, and for a while, we were, in, in the weekly memo, we were, whenever there was an event, we were putting in what the actual cost-
Well, it was a couple councils ago that were really concerned about all the overtime, and we got looking at all these gatherings, so I'd rather not ask after the fact, I'd rather have it just plain and simple, this is one of the costs of doing this, and they spend money on other aspects, and we clean up after, I mean, it's just, I think it's a burden that they need to share, the event that wants to come needs to share. It hardly covers the whole city cost, but I think it can help cover the cost.
Go ahead, Ashley, did you have something to add?
I would, I would just second what Donna said, I mean, you know, federal presidential candidates, they have campaign funds, and I think it's perfectly reasonable for them to pay their fair share. We have to bring in additional, like, public safety folk, MVPW folk, and emergency, you know, personnel, I, for a specific event, I guess, you know, it, it's not a- you know, personnel, I, for a specific event, I guess, you know, it, it's not a, a, you know, a cause issue. It's more, you know, this is a candidate who'd be using our resources and basically requiring that resources be utilized for an event that buys. And that's just part, I mean, they, they pay these fees all over the place. So I, I just, and if you're running for, for president, while, you know, I appreciate that it shouldn't cost what it costs, I mean, besides for me is that if, if the candidates themselves don't pay for it or, you know, the organization that demands that we respond doesn't pay for it, that means that our residents are gonna be feeing that and then we're gonna be faced with, you know, another budget season where the question, you know, has been and will be once again at some point, you know, what are we gonna have to cut?
Yeah, thank you. Connor and then Stephen?
Yeah, just the, the more I think about this, like, it seems almost impossible to define some of this stuff. So if it's a political event, is it a candidate? Is it a political action committee? Is it a political party that features candidates on it?
I said, I said all events.
Your uniform, but like protests, what's that? The Women's March was a protest, right? It was a protest against like the president. So, yeah, going, going into it in detail, I just, I, I, I don't know how to define it. I think I've changed my mind over the course of the discussion. I'm probably more with Lauren.
Stephen?
Just one more question. I don't know whether the, the state itself, you know, charges anybody for the use of facilities, you know, on, in the capital complex for these, these kinds of events. That might be worth looking at. I don't know if you've done that.
That to me feels like a precedent. I, I end up, I think, leaning more towards Ashley and Donna on this, in the sense that I'd, I'd rather be upfront with a cost and let them ask for a waiver, you know, if they, if they can't pay it, you know, especially if they're a nonprofit, you know, for something like the Corporate Cup, yes, there's cost incurred, but, you know, it's for this cause and would we consider waiving it and, and allowing that to happen? But, and I could actually even picture on the form, you know, that people fill out to close a street, you know, is this event estimated to cost more than $500 in city staff or overtime? And most of the time, the answer will be no, but sometimes it'll be yes. And I think if we had more events that were, I mean, like the example that's given in this, you know, the document that we received is for the Discover Jazz Festival. You know, if we had more entertainment-related events like Do Good Fest or whatever, it might be clearer that like, no, this is a, this is, you know, this is a company that's making a profit or this is, you know, this is not necessarily, I mean, clearly, political events are, are much more tied to issues of speech.
But there are some, sometimes fundraising.
Sure, sure, yep. So it's, anyway, I, it, if we were, somehow I feel like if we weren't talking about political issues, then it would somehow be clearer. Anyway, so, and I, I agree with Connor in that, you know, it's tough to differentiate or define what the content is. So, anyway, but that's, that's where I'm at and I'm happy to be, you know, elvoted or whatever, so it's all good. But, yeah.
I'm really glad we're having this conversation. It's kind of fun, I think. I am, I, I think the way I'm seeing it is, we can choose what kind of host we want to be. We can't necessarily choose our guests. We're, we are the capital city and people come here and they will. And honestly, to me, the more I think about it, the more I think, I think of it in, kind of in terms of a potluck, that, you know, when, when someone comes to your house, you ask them to bring enough to feed the party, but if they come and, you know, they don't have that food or a drink or whatever, it's not like you kick them out. You're still hosting. So to me...
You might not invite them again.
You might not invite them again, but, but...
We don't get, we don't do the invitations.
We don't get to do the invitations. The analogy doesn't hold all the way through that.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah, no, I agree, thank you. But I think, I, I guess I continue to feel that since so far, 100% of our requested donations to reimburse have been fulfilled, that feels like a good model so far. And, one. But, but I think we could, as Mary said, on the application for a street closure, say, if your event is going to bring more than X number of people, we think we're gonna have to pay some overtime. In that case, we're going to be asking you to cover that. And so they know that we're going to be asking them, but again, it's not a requirement and it's not something that, where, where we are picking groups that, that we waive the requirement for or charge, because I am a little uncomfortable with that, as, as Lauren pointed out. I think it's better to, to figure out what kind of host we want to be and then let the guests behave as they might.
I guess...
Go ahead, Ashley.
And I just wanted to follow up if, and if that's cool.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I guess, if, if the, if the council's seriously considering, like, the, the, let's just act and keep hoping they pay, I mean, my goodness, I hope President Trump didn't hear that, because we know that he, like, has never paid any of his bills ever, you know? And so I guess, like, having a policy like that, like, puts all of us at a disadvantage when the degree of altruism that we are willing to assume in political candidates is in solid brew on and then the, you know, the, the burden of that is borne by all of us. And I, I just, if the council, you know, if the council leaning towards like, oh, let's just keep acting policy, I'm not super interested in spending any of my time on that because that's not an effective, like, that's, to me, that's not an effective use of a, of a policy decision, but if that's to where everyone else is at, I totally respect that and, and, you know, I don't invest it in, in, if I'm paying any time on that, you know, keep, keep doing what we're doing until somebody says no and then we'll revisit it. That's just what we deem effective.
So I think, unless there's more comments, I think the question is, is there an appetite to develop a more formal policy? Jack?
Just observing the conversation, I think that it's close enough. We don't know for sure if we had a vote, what would hap, tonight, we had, would happen, but I think it's, there's enough interest to make it worth, make, make me think it's worthwhile to go further, have a draft policy, have an actual hearing where we're inviting people to come and talk about it, once we have a draft policy and at least continue the discussion.
So if that's the case, and, and again, I, I really don't, you know, I, I understand all the issues. I guess there's certain categories of events, so, I, I, so I'm just gonna ask you questions and you can nod, because these are, these are kind of the policy questions that I can remind you of. So, so city-sponsored events would be exempt?
Exempt, yes.
Okay, there's one, so, y'all agree? All right. Entertainment-type events, to, to the point that I guess Glenn was saying, what I would envision is we would actually, when, when we fill out our, you know, street closures or event permits, the police, fire and public works have to sign off on these anyway. I think they would just put, you know, we'll need extra officers, estimated cost X, and then the, the person can see in advance what the potential cost is going to be. It doesn't, you know, they're not caught with a bill after the fact and then they can decide if they wanna alter their event or that kind of thing. So, that's a, that's an administrative matter, but might help, so, so entered, you know, street closures, entertainment, you know, those types of events, they would be, consider those for fee? Okay? Can, campaign events for a candidate for any office, I guess, I'm not gonna say just president, could be governor, it could be, I mean, who knows? Could be mayor. Could close down the streets and charge.
Charger!
That's right. Closing down the streets, the whole city.
Campaign events for candidates.
Yes.
Yes. And then, I don't know what the right word is, events for causes, marches, those kinds of things?
That's one I, I have more pause about because they are so hard to, they can be so spontaneous and we do want them to register with us.
Sure, and some of them, right, and, and I'm not arguing, I'm just reminding, and some, like the Women's March, were extremely well-planned in advance with date and publicity and, you know, there was no question it was gonna cost us a bunch of money, but who would you bill?
Right.
Well, the Corporate Cup has been mentioned a couple times and it seems to me that's a very well-sponsored and businesses get a lot of publicity out of it, but the city doesn't get publicity out of what we've given. And so I feel it's fair to put our tin cup out there and say, we, we feel that you should help us support...
And they did provide some funds last year, just again voluntarily, but I think, I don't, I think it's, the event's still gonna go on.
Because there, I mean, we have a lot of charitable groups, nonprofits, and some of them are really large. So I don't, don't say automatically a nonprofit can't afford it.
My own feeling, and this would be up to you, my own feeling would be the criteria for waiving a fee, if you wanted to include a waiver option, wouldn't necessarily be how big the organization is or whether they can afford it. It would be, is the, is this event in the public interest? You know, is this, is there a public benefit? That's the criteria used for upstairs, as opposed to, you know, we're gonna throw this party and we're gonna, we're gonna close the street, we're gonna have this party, we're gonna make money from the sales of everything that happened and you have to put extra policemen on. I mean, the public might enjoy it, don't get me wrong, but it's not necessarily for the public interest, you know, whereas I think, so I, I, 'cause once we get down an affordability road, I think everyone's gonna come in here and try that they can't afford it.
Coming back to your question, just to differentiate these two things, if it's a, like a registered political candidate, then that seems like one way to define it and just a protest or a rally, may, maybe we leave that off for now. Thoughts about that? Yeah, Lauren?
I just think that could be a little hard to sometimes define where the line is or does somebody, is it kind of a private event, but it's like, oh, it's, I put it out on Front Porch Forum, so it's a public rally or, I don't know. Maybe it's not as hard. I'm, I'm trying to think, I mean, one thing just to flag on that front, like, I've been involved in a lot of events and rallies and often there's like 30 sponsoring organizations. So to Bill's point, like, who do you bill and who's the bottom line? Like, and often it's pretty amorphous and things are changing and people are jumping in and throwing their name on stuff, who might not realize there's any fiscal responsibility around it. So I, I do think for those kinds of events, it, it would be, I'm, I'm saying both sides of it, I think it's, like, but I think it could be hard to figure out, like, who do we even hold accountable? Like, somebody presumably might put the application in and then they alone are on the hook for these expenses and they, they would have to figure that out. But I'm just, I'm just going back to like, not wanting to discourage this kind of civic engagement and I just fear that if you're like, well, I might, as an organization, be the one, am I willing to put my name in when it might be a huge expense, 'cause like 30 other groups sign on and all of a sudden it becomes this much bigger thing I didn't plan on and I have to hold the bag for that, like, as a small nonprofit or something, so...
But I guess, like, if you're a political candidate running for, like, president, I feel like you should probably be able to hire someone who, you know, who agrees with the rules. But, you know, and, and to me, like, I, I don't think that I have any interest in, like, pouring into the, you know, this is a, a nonprofit unless they ask for a waiver, but to me, like, I, I even think that, I'm not sure, I haven't taken a look if there have been any revisions to the Vermont campaign finance laws, but I'm pretty sure that the way that our law is written is that, like, if any organization or something or entity has to expend funds on something related to a political, like, candidate event or, like, an, an event put on by a PAC, like, that has to get recorded as an in-kind contribution. So, you know, whether, whether or not, you know, anyone is complying with that reading of, of the state law, I mean, I, I still, I just, I, you know, I don't think there need to be, like, burdensome things to put together, like, a, a rally, for example, around a cause or something, but if you're talking about Bernie Sanders or Donald Trump or, you know, Elizabeth Warren, whoever it may be who's running for, you know, president, or frankly, even congressional, I mean, they have dollars and they are campaign funds to pay for these kinds of things. And, you know, like, rent is already out of control and again, like, yes, I wanna be, you know, part of the political process and I think we are a political hotbed in Vermont, but I also wanna be mindful that, you know, we can't, we can't expect residents to shoulder that entire burden, you know, because, you know, we wanna support political candidates, you know? Yes, that's great, we wanna support political candidates, but we wanna put food on our table, too.
So Ashley, I think, I don't know whether you weren't able to hear properly, but I thought, I think the council said for political candidate campaigns, they would impose the, the fees. We, we were debating was the extra rallies, protests, not, not directly associated with a specific political candidate?
I think you have to be careful, though, because sometimes a PAC can come in and this is perfectly permissible in, in certain ways, you know, where, where it wouldn't necessarily be an event that runs behalf of a particular candidate, but as long as they meet certain requirements, you know, the PAC can do it. And, and so I guess I'm just sort of saying, like, why would you wanna give them a PAC on that, you know, when, when they're utilizing other, you know, ways which are consistent with political process? Like, why aren't we just transparent in, in what our process is and we ask the questions and have fire, you know, have chief of police and chief of fire weigh in on whether or not additional personnel is needed for these events of any kind, you know, and, and then we go from there?
Uh, Jack, then Connor?
I suggest, because there are constitutional implications here, I suggest we, A, consult with the city attorney on this point and, two, invite the ACLU when we're having our next discussion to come in and comment either in advance or at the meeting.
Fair.
And if I can add a C and a D on that, it's probably worth inviting somebody from the Secretary of State's office, to Ashley's point on the campaign finance rules that have, I think, recently been amended. And it also might be worth, like, talking to, like, Manchester or Concord, New Hampshire, who sees a lot of this type of activity and see if they have any draft policies that we could maybe take a look at. Because honestly, if I'm, if I was Bernie Sanders and I went to, like, skirt the rules on this, I'd just get like 501(c)(3) or (4), like Our Revolution or something, say you put it on and invite me, you know? Same differences?
Yeah.
Right, exactly, and that's my input.
Uh, Lauren?
And this is where, like, I just keep coming back to the squishiness, so, you know, so there's this climate rally in a couple weeks, so, like, David Zuckerman speaking, he's always running for something, like, what, is that a campaign event for him? Like, I don't think it's always as clear-cut, like, there's, like, the rally that, that Bernie organized is one thing, but that was clearly, but then there's a lot of events that are like, I think, to your point, Ashley, like, could it be a way of skirting it? So I think Donna's point of clarity and consistency, if we are gonna go down this road, even if I don't support it, I, I think consistency would be a really good approach without trying to come up with squishy categories.
And Bill's gonna draft a form that's gonna make this all consistently clear.
You know, that's what Burlington does it.
Do you know, yeah.
You know, when I emailed with the folks in Burlington, you know, they were saying we, we cover it all. If you're having an event that, you know, you're having a ton of people, a certain amount of people, then you're gonna need, you know, extra security, making sure people are safe, you are employing off-duty officers. And so if you look at this agreement, you know, they say, you know, how much it would be per hour, but it also has other things in here, you know, holding us harmless for, or the police harmless for things that go on in that event. So I think they specifically went for all events to, to sort of not have to, to deal with this sort of thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Glenn?
Yeah, I think if we're going to charge, then we should just charge everyone, honestly. I don't, that is, everyone past a certain threshold of people, maybe.
Yeah, and anyone who applies for a street closure, I mean, you, you can't protest or protest, they're gonna happen, but if you are... or protest, they're going to happen, but if you are seeking out our streets to close, that, you know, that's a service.
But there is a difference, and I, you know, I don't mean to contradict you, but there is a, a, like, a little side street for a neighborhood block party.
Right.
You know, yeah, I mean, someone has to put the barricades out, and usually what happens is DPW drops them off on Friday afternoon, picks them up on Monday morning, and then the people themselves put them out at the, you know, the time they've agreed to, and that doesn't really, that's not really any extra cost to us, and it's a, a nice thing. I think the issue is if, if there is an event that is going to cause a direct cost, then we put that on the form, you know, there could be a street closure on XYZ street, and we just say no cost involved.
The downtown, the, the main.
Right. But if it's main state, and it's going to be a closure, and it's going to be public safety people and directing traffic and barricades and trash, then there's cost, and...
And maybe it's just for police and not public works, you know, the thing that's going to cost the most.
Or maybe we just go up with a flat public works fee and say, you have your, no, but I mean, just, you know, then instead of having to worry about, yeah, barricade package, it's a hundred bucks or something.
They charge interest.
Yeah, I saw that. They charge interest. Okay, thank you. So do we need a motion reg- oh, sorry, go ahead.
I wasn't going to make a no, motion, but I was hoping when Bill comes back with his drafts, Jamie's drafts, that you would also bring us the data on how much money we end up spending for, in the past. I know at one point you, you told us, I just can't remember.
We should dig that up for budget time.
Yes.
Do we need a motion regarding this, or do you feel like you have clear enough direction at this point?
I guess the only question is, do you, do you, I mean, do you care when you get it back? Weather's getting colder.
Um, I would love to be talking about this again sometime before the end of the year.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yep. Maybe in, maybe in conjunction with the budget.
Yeah, yeah, fair.
Then you'll all be for it.
Numbers.
Yeah, exactly. Because we need more events in town, so we can charge them. No, okay. All right, thank you. All right, and the, an appointment to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, I know there was, Jaclyn, you have?
I was interested in being appointed, but as I was concerned might happen, at least one of those days, I have a hearing in court in Burlington, so I really can't volunteer to do it this, this time around.
It's the first day that you actually have to vote.
Oh.
Attend the business meeting. The second day is just fun and workshops.
Well, I, I actually could do that.
Okay.
I actually could do the, do October 2nd or whatever that Wednesday is.
I think, I think it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
And Wednesday is, it's the afternoon.
Right.
Session, that's the actual meeting.
And I will say that this year is different, which I hadn't completely, no, you're, you're correct.
I thought I looked at it.
That's when the business, no, that's when the business meeting is, but, and I'd forgotten this when we talked about it last time, but last year, the, the league voted to do their policy discussions every other year, so that the policies are now two-year policies. So there is some business to take care of this year, but it's not the full debate about municipal policy, so I, I had pitched it as that, and it's not, so just didn't want to disappoint anybody that...
I'm, I'm less interested than.
Okay.
My, I, I've already signed up to go. If nobody else is going, then, fine. It's really wonderful workshops, I'm sorry you all miss it, but maybe sometime.
I wish I could go. So Donna, you're interested, or Lauren, no?
Somebody nominate Donna. I nominate Donna.
Nobody else wants it.
Okay, for the discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you for doing it. Okay, so we are down to council reports. Who would like to start? Donna, go ahead.
I just want to remind you of a write-up, actually, in Bill and Jamie's newsletter, the Park of Palooza is one more Saturday, and if you haven't been there, it's a really fun time in Hubbard Park. The kids have water slide games, overnight camping, and September 21st, three to nine, Hubbard Park, this is the last chance for this year.
Great, thank you. Connor?
Yeah, just want to welcome Rabble Rouser to town. Got the chance to stop by the other day, and was talking to Jaclyn, the owner of Nutty Steph's there, and she did want to come in and introduce herself. Public comment tonight, but got very sick, but she's looking forward to doing it the next time, but I, I think it's a great spot, just sort of, is an incubator for small businesses. It brings a bit more life into our downtown, so very welcome to have them. That's it for me.
Let's see, not a real report yet from the Homelessness Task Force, because as we noted earlier in the meeting, has not yet met, but we are on our way, and there are at least already side conversations about this, of course, as there have been. I'm looking forward to that with some trepidation, but looking forward. I continue to visit Another Way down on Berry Street every month, and I think this month I will try to go, I'm inviting myself there, so I should check with them first, but just going to say it anyway, that since the first Homelessness Task Force meeting is on Monday, the 23rd, typically I go on Monday afternoon, once a month to Another Way, I'll just make it the 23rd. So if anyone wants to meet me at Another Way, Monday, the 23rd, from 2:00 to 3:00, I'll be there talking with those folks, and then Homelessness Task Force later that afternoon, 4:30 here, I believe. I've also been enjoying representing the city on the Wood Gallery Board. There's a lot of good activity going on there. I think the mayor got to cut a ribbon on an elevator recently.
He sure did.
I missed that event, but I've been watching the progress, and it's great there. There's a fantastic show in the Contemporary Gallery right now, Tessa O'Brien and Galen Cheney painting and collage, everyone should go see it. And I'm working out the details, but I will, I believe I will be teaching a drawing class at the Wood Gallery on Tuesday evenings for a month, starting the second week of October. So that's going to be tons of fun for me, and possibly fun for my students, I don't know yet, we'll see. Anyone who would be interested should contact the Wood. It's not up on the website yet, but I think it will be. I'm going to be away next week, so I'm not going to Baguio's next Thursday, but I will be there tomorrow morning, as usual, 8:30 to 9:30.
Thank you. Jaclyn?
I, also, I think there's a lot of good stuff happening in Montpelier. I, are you going to talk about Drive Electric?
I was going to, but you can do it, too.
Okay, no, no, go ahead, because you're going to be able to be there, and I won't be able to be there, unfortunately.
Oh, fair enough. Well, I'll do that in my spiel, yeah.
But I, I was at the Art Walk on Friday night, there's, I stopped by the front, but Councilor Hutchinson wasn't there, but...
I was working.
Uh-huh, but, but I also stopped by some of the other venues, there's, there's good work out there, and it's going to be up for, like, a couple of months, so people should go out and see it, and it's one of those things that, when I say, well, things are happening in Montpelier, this is, that's one of those things that's happening in Montpelier. And the other thing, I went to the opening reception for Rabble Rouser, and I thought, I was very impressed, because I went, I wasn't there for very long, but I stopped in, and there were probably fifty or a hundred people in there, and I didn't know a single person. And if we're bringing businesses to, to the city that are attracting people that I've never met in my 36 years of living here, I think that's, that, that's a great thing. So get out and, and check the place out.
Thanks, go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, not much to report. Did just want to note that the Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee continues to meet. We met this morning, and I think in the next month or so, we will be coming forward with a proposal for kind of next steps for the committee, so I'll just leave you in suspense, but look forward to some really good conversations about kind of the next phase for that committee. And I will let Ann talk about the Drive Electric, but I'm going to drive my electric car there.
Yeah.
It's great, everyone should get one, they're the best.
Ashley, do you have anything you want to update us on?
Um, no, not this week.
Okey-dokey. So I have three events I want to talk about. So the first one, as people have mentioned, is the Drive Electric event that is this Saturday, the 14th. It's going to be at the State House lawn. Speaking of street closures, we're, they're going to close down Baldwin Street and Gov-, I think that's Governor Aiken. Anyway, so, anyway, well, they're going to have something like thirty, more than thirty electric vehicles there, fourteen different types of electric vehicles, multiple Teslas, if you want to go check those out. There will be a couple of dealers there who can offer test rides, just sort of around the, around, you know, the, the block, so to speak, so you can feel how they drive, you can ask all your hard questions, some of people who are actually living with electric vehicles. Besides that, there's going to be other types of electric things there, electric lawn mowers and bicycles. You can test drive electric bike there if you, if you would like. There's also going to be music and food, so it should be a great event. It starts at 11:00, goes till 2:00, so it'll roughly overlap the farmer's market as well. So would highly encourage everybody to come out to that, it's going to be pretty interesting, I think.
Electric music.
And electric music, well, amplified, anyway, this is true. Probably, no, no electric guitars, as far as I know, I could be wrong, though. So that's going to be a great event. Second thing is, next week, a week from tonight, there's the 18th of September, 6:30 here in this room, is going to be the Transportation Meeting. We have people from Agency of Transportation, Sustainable Montpelier Coalition, Green Mountain Transit, All Earth Rail, I'm sure I'm probably missing someone, but...
And the On-Demand Transit people.
On-Demand Transit people, we've also reached out to MTIC, see if they want to present as well. The, the idea is to have an update from all these different groups, to give us a picture of what the future of transportation might look like, things that they're working on, and it's an opportunity for us to sort of ask questions about, you know, the feasibility of things, or just whatever probing questions we, we have about that, the, the future of transportation in Montpelier, so that's coming up. And actually, this is the, another thing I hadn't planned on saying, but there's going to be an additional transportation meeting on October 2nd, also in this room, but it's the Regional Planning Commission, so the Southern Regional Planning Commission is planning on a, a transportation-themed evening in, in this space again, but having a, a regional perspective, and I think that will actually be very interesting, just because of the nature of transportation. Of course, we should be coordinating those plans with people outside of Montpelier, so just wanted to put in a plug for that. And then of that, I have on my calendar for 6:00 here in this, in this room. Yeah, October 2nd, that's another Wednesday. Okay, and a fourth event is September 24th, that's a Tuesday, day before our next council meeting, is the, the big reveal, so to speak, for the Confluence Park design. So they've been taking in all this feedback for months about what that space could or should look like, taking public comment, and they've, they've got a product to, to show us, and so I had asked that they not be sort of revealing that at a council meeting, and so we're giving it its own sort of night, so that's on the 24th, that's 7:30. I think it's here, but I should double-check the space, I'm pretty... The 24th, Tuesday, the 24th, seven, what's that?
That's the Regional Transportation.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a memory. Anyway, 7:30, I think it's, I'm sure it's going to be somewhere in this building, it's probably in this room, so. In any case, I just wanted to put that on people's radars as well. Okay, that's it for me.
Clerk?
Crystal?
Um, I'll just remind people that if, 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 if bills are due on the 15th.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have much, except to say that we are very, very close on Assistant Manager and DBW, just working out a few details, hope to have an announcement soon.
Great. Okey-dokey. All right, so I think that is it. So without objection, we'll consider the meeting adjourned, 9:17.